God, we ask that you continue to bless the city of East St. Louis. Through its trials and tribulations, we know that you are still God and that you are still leading this community. So we thank you for your leadership. We ask that you continue to touch the leaders of this great city as they do their best to steward the people as well as the finances and the moral goals of this city as we continue forward. God, we thank you so much for continuing to bless this community and we ask that you continue to rain down those blessings. Amen. So, of course, we all know that we're going to touch on a couple of different subjects here. The goal is to talk about We Care. That will be encompassing the We Care funding as well as the American Rescue Plan Act. And the focus here is concern, action, resident empowerment. So that's what we're focusing on. That's the theme for today. The agenda will touch again, Mayor Eastern will start off with introductions and then Carlos Mayfield will go over the CARES funding as well as the American Rescue Act. And then Mayor Eastern will touch on new city initiatives that encompass what we're focusing on with that funding. A few housekeeping rules. There is a community survey that will follow this town hall. We are asking for you all's feedback. It's online as well as some paper copies will be there at the front receptionist desk with Deja. And there are some community groups in the back of the room that focus on doing what they can to help improve our community. So there's a community garden back there as well as some cleanup organizations and a conservancy group. So please feel free to visit them at the end of the program so that way you can learn about different city, I'm sorry, citizen-led initiatives that are a part of our East St. Louis community. And again, I will turn it over to our mayor, Mayor Robert Eastern III. He has, is on his, few months into his third term, a former city councilman and has been a great leader in the city for several years and continues to do what he can to empower the citizens as well as the employees and the community as a whole. So with that being said, Mayor Robert Eastern.
Good evening, everyone. We can do better than that. Good evening. This is very exciting for me, a town hall meeting and almost every seat is filled. You know, that means that citizens are scared, ready to learn and to empower them and to also give us feedback as we move into the different directions. So as you stated, Mayor Robert Eastern III of the great city of East St. Louis, city of champions, right? The city of champions. Champions always find a way to win, correct? Y'all don't sound convincing. I say champions always find a way to win. I hear that from East St. Louis, not Bill, Bill Chalo, but from East St. Louis. East St. Louis, right? All right. Let's get excited about East St. Louis. Let's get excited about East St. Louis. This is a different time right now. I'm very excited about where we are at right now as America's city of East St. Louis and the time and the blessings that God has rained down upon us. I'm very excited about that. So let's do it again. Let's get excited, East St. Louis. I'll give some introductions and then I'll turn it over to the city manager to go into this, starting with city manager Carlos Mayfield. Just wave your hand. This is our new city manager, Mr. Carlos Mayfield. All right. Economic Development is Mr. Shanil Playboy. Director of Personnel is Mr. Cartilian Andrews. Federal Worker Director is Mr. Timothy Lockett. Director of Sports Management Director Tony Howard. Chief of Fire, Mr. Jason Blackman. Police Chief, Mr. Kendall Perry. We have our clerk in the house, Mr. Deborah Tidwell. And the one that we entrusted finances, what we're here to talk about tonight, is Mr. Willie Autumn. Back there on the side in the yellow shirt is Mr. Kimberly Trenshaw, who's Executive Assistant to City Manager. And Deputy Chief, George McCullough, who's Chief of Fire. And we want to make sure that we legally saying everything right, so we got our attorney, Mr. John Barrett. As you stated, do we have any precinct commitment in the house? I wanted to make sure they stand as well, that have been out campaigning and knocking on doors because we're going to instill them as we go out here to this We Care program. So I see Mr. Timothy Lockett, Mr. Harry Hollisworth, Alvin Parks, I see Raven Bonds in the house. You know, so we're going to be going door to door, right? This We Care program. We want to make sure that we get that feedback from the citizens. You know, it's important, it's very important and very vital to everything that we do. So I'm very excited about that. I don't want to belabor, I want to make, I know it's warm in here, that's one of the things we're going to be touching on, this building and such like that and trying to address issues that we need to address here in City of East St. Louis to make it more viable and more better for our citizens. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Carlos Mayfield.
Good evening again. It's certainly a pleasure to be with each and every one of you all. My task tonight is very clear, succinct, and concise. First and foremost, I want to thank the Lord for allowing me to be here tonight. As the mayor mentioned, that I am the new city manager. And I've had the great pleasure of engaging in the community and getting to know some of the residents and the citizens that are here in this great city. And yes, you are a city of champions. Give yourselves a hand praise. I want to talk about just quickly a couple of things that may resonate with you. If not, I'm here to lend an opportunity for you to get better understanding and underscore some things as it relates to a funding breakdown that we want to share with you all. First of all, we have been really fortunate to capture several funding sources outside of our general revenue that we are stewards over in our great city. And the first source that I want to talk about is our CARES funding source, a funding source that we received about a million point one dollars, million dollars, in the month of December 2020. And that was largely connected to the pandemic and the COVID pandemic that took place in our great nation throughout the world. And as a result of that, the CARES Act or the CARES funding that we received was a direct initiative that was out of the Obama, excuse me, the Trump administration. And so we were recipients of that. We were able to use the funding. We had a shortfall in reimbursing our police and fire for their overtime funding, for their working and serving our great city. And we were able to take those funds and utilize that 1.1 million dollars to pay all of the back debt that was due to wages for our public servants and safety departments such as fire and the police department. And we're excited today that we've been, we've used those funds for that sole purpose. So let's give a big hand of praise for that. The second source of funding that we captured most recently was to, it was called initiative called Rebuild Illinois. Rebuild Illinois, that was state funding that we were using, well, we captured the funds to do just that, to rebuild Illinois. And that meant primarily to rebuild the infrastructure, the roads, streets, and sewers, and things of that magnitude. We have, we have not used those funds yet. We still have captured those funds. We've earmarked those as part of our plan that the mayor will be talking about here shortly, to execute that 1.1 million dollars to make our roads and streets better. We need that, don't we? And we want to make sure that we're good stewards of doing that. To drill just a little deeper, we received those dispersments of funds in four payments from the state of Illinois. It was $269,63, $269,930, something that magnitude. So we got four payments which accrued to the amount of 1.1 million dollars. Again, we've got that money that's earmarked. We're not using it for anything other than the sole purpose of making our streets, our sewers, and our roads much better and our infrastructure in this great city. The last source of funding that we've captured is through the Biden administration. It's called the American Rescue Plan. And that money we've already secured is $18,189,929.48. You ought to give God a hand praise for that. That money has been earmarked in a special fund. Our treasurers here tonight as well who agree with me, we have put that money outside of our operating budget for day to day and we have put that money in a particular fund or an account to where we can't touch it until the appropriate time to distribute the money in the areas that we feel that are best served and best needed to execute and make our city a greater city. So that money hasn't been touched. We are going, and that's part of our approach tonight, is to share with you all where we believe that the best service is to utilize those things and where we're going with that. That's the A part of that funding that we receive, the 18 million dollars. And we say it quite often in City Hall, we've got to be good stewards of this money so we can get the B part of it, which is another windfall of another 18 million dollars. So we're doing everything we can internally in City Hall to make sure we have the proper protocols, the procedures. Because one thing about the funding that we give or receive, the 18 million dollars, there's a small stipulation that goes with it. At any point, the federal government can come in and audit the funding. And if we're penny off, we'll be penalized and we have to refer, we have to return the money. I know the mayor, the council, our department heads, we do not know, we don't want to return 18 million dollars to anybody. Can you say amen tonight? So we're excited about that. The mayor's going to talk a little bit more extensively about that, but we have a vision of using that for infrastructure, expanding a broadband, securing some revenue losses that have been closely associated with different departments and things like that, helping our citizens, helping our businesses, and other facets that move our city toward what the mayor calls the 2030 Plan. With that being said, I want to move on and move away from that and just give you a little echo here. The CARES Act program, which means the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, you can look at that online whenever you get a chance and they'll tell you a little bit more about that. There are several sources that are provided. The money can be tracked. The money is open. It's very transparent and we want to be very open and transparent with our citizens. So you all know how the money's being dispersed, how the money's being used, and how it will be allocated to move our city forward. All right? That's all for my work.
Thank you, city manager. All right, so let's get right into it. What is the 2030 Plan? What is the 2030 Plan? So the 2030 Plan... So the 2030 Plan came directly off of working with SIUE. They was helping us do a Kellogg grant. I'm sorry, you can't hear me? Can you get closer to the microphone? Can you hear me now? Okay. So the 2030 Plan was directly stemmed off of working with SIUE as they were helping us with the Kellogg grant. The Kellogg grant was going to be a 20 million dollar grant for the next 10 years and we were working on these different initiatives and things to try to, you know, we had to cultivate a plan. So we was unsuccessful in going into the last phase of that, but through that, we got a synergy, right, with SIUE and different citizens and that was a part of that initiative. So right when we got the word about that, we got the blessing of the CARES Act, I'm sorry, the American Recovery Plan, the 18 million dollars. So we wanted this dovetailed into that and we wanted to use that synergy, right, and make sure that we was being strategic in how we were planning and what we were using. You know, we didn't want to recreate the wheel. We didn't want to start all over, but we were already in a rhythm, right? So we continued to work in that rhythm. And some of those people that I'll talk about tonight or talk about that were helping, is helping us planning right now at the strategic stakeholders meetings that we're having is Illinois State Police, the Casino Queen, the East St. Louis Police Department, the Fire Department, Thompson Civil Engineering, Southwest, Southern, I'm sorry, Southern Illinois, Illinois University Ranch Department, Mississippi Rivers and Towns Initiative, the East St. Louis Housing Authority, Herschel Rocha, who's another engineering firm, Greater St. Louis Inc., St. Louis Chambers of Commerce, the East St. Louis District 189, because we want to stop working in silos, right? You know, we can't continue to work in silos and the city rebound from where it is. So we need to break down those walls, we need to get in the room, and we need to work together. So the East St. Louis Township, the School District, and the city, we're working together to help, to craft a comprehensive plan for the city of East St. Louis. And also Miles Sinai, the Winstanley Development Group, we understand, we all know what they've been doing here in the past several years, and we just need to get them a round of applause just for doing the things they're doing over there at Winstanley. Southern Illinois Tourism Bureau and Heartland Conservatory, these are just some of the groups, just to name of, that's been a part of the strategic plan. So we're very excited about them. And you might ask yourself, why did they get involved? You know, knocking on doors, me asking for help, me asking for the technical assistance, you know, because I understand, you know, it's never been my, or let me redirect that. I don't want to be the smartest person in the room. I don't want to be the one to have all the answers. I want to have a collective body of people that can challenge us to do the best that we can with the resources we have. So that's why, you know, we want to break down those barriers of working in silos. It takes all of us to make the change in East St. Louis. Each and every one of us can add something to our city, you know? I know most of you in here personally, I know most of you in here very well, you know, and I see the comments on Facebook, I see the interaction that we have personally and professionally, and I know that everybody has a heart that want to change the city. So, you know, we have to make sure that we cultivate that and captivate that energy right now. And this is the first time in the longest time that I ever, I seen our city with the citizens energized trying to make a change. Get yourself around the crowd. I too believe, as you stated, we got the group in the back, you know, we got the rec team, which is the regular, everyday citizens. There's a group of people that's going out cleaning up. This Woolery, I see over there, you know, the Black Woodstock, she's doing her thing, you know? We got Zach Schike, and everybody knows Zach, you know, he's a young man that's out there cleaning up the curbs and all this. Let's give, you know, these people, let's get them. You know, and it started from a conversation that we had, you know, individually with Karan, Peyton, and Zach, you know, individually, and we were talking and we were just, hey, Mayor, we want to help. We want to do this. I said, I'll tell you what you do. You go out there and do it and we'll support you. I don't want to be the one that's out there with you because I don't, I want it to be organic. I want the citizens to know that, hey, it's a citizen out there, you know, but I'm going to be there to support you, whatever I can do. So they've been out there doing their thing and they've called me, we need to do this, we need to do that, and it's done. You know, so I just want to give them a round of applause because, you know, everybody knows these guys out there that serve our city. And it's going to take those type of initiatives, you know, to come and change the city and help us with this 2030 Plan. And the 2030 Plan is directly derived from also the census, right? We know every 10 years, we have a census count. This year, we made it. Give yourself a round of applause. Do you want to contend, Larita? Stand up. Stand up, Larita. Stand up. She helped us. She did everything she could. She knocked on doors, she did everything. So I'm not done, stand up. Stand up. Stand up. Stand up. Masks, hand sanitizer, everything that we can call on that I needed, she was there. So give her a round of applause. But she was not, we forgot. And every time I see her, I point out, I know she tired of that, but I'm going to keep pointing out because I believe in giving the homage where it's due, and she did that. She's one of the biggest reasons why we're able to keep our census, our census count and we were able to achieve those goals, along with the commitment and all that, but she's just a citizen, just doing the thing she needs to do. Wasn't paid, wasn't doing anything, she was just doing what she needs to do. So we appreciate that. We honestly appreciate it. So we got the Strategic Planning Task Force, our name. Now we have the East St. Louis Tourism Task Force, it's Catherine Addonam, the House of Miles, Casino Queen as well, East St. Louis Historical Society, Southern Illinois University Ranch Department, and Southern Illinois Tourism Bureau. We know, we know that we're not a industry town anymore, correct? You know, this is not an industry that we live in. And again, I apologize about the heat, but we're going to do something about that. We're going to help the township and those entities be better than since we got this CARES money. And this is what it's for, correct? It's for our city. We want to make sure that this is a cooling center, this is a heating center, you know, and we need to make sure that we do those things to try to help them keep the doors open and do those things. So with this Tourism Task Force, it was very, it's intentional, right? That's my new word. Everybody say intentional. Y'all ain't say it like you mean it. Intentional. Everything we do is intentional. We intentionally doing these things because we want to make sure that we get the outside community looking at us differently. Everything that we do on Facebook is strategic. Everything that we do is organic. It's from the heart. It's not scripted, but it's strategic, you know, and it's planning. And we want to make sure we continue to do those things and this Tourism Group was a part of that because we needed to get more people coming through our city, right? So what is it, what do we need to do? And it's just not the things that we, that traditionally that we think of, you know, the museum, Catherine Addonam, the House of Miles, phenomenal job, stand up. House of Miles, Catherine Addonam, stand up. I am East St. Louis Magazine, stand up. These are people that are something people view us differently. When they see these things outside the community and I get engaged with them, you know, it's not everything that I'm doing and those gentlemen in the back is everything that you guys are doing, the positive things that they're seeing. Everybody's watching. I didn't know that, and the greatest testament was that too. I'll tell you a little story. The greatest testament that was, in January, I get a phone call, I get an email. So I sent the email back and replied, and I get a phone call. So we get the phone call and I was blown away, I was taken away. And inside, in the phone call, it was stated, it's like, well, Mayor, we've been watching what you and the city of East St. Louis has been doing. You and the city of East St. Louis has been doing, and we're very proud and we want you to be part of that. And what happened? They made your mayor the honorary commander for the next three years of Sky Air Force Base. It's never been heard of. And that's great because we've been going collectively as a group. Melanie, I see over there, I had forgotten you, she's, you know, they also put me on the Illinois Commission in Hunger, and now I'm soliciting Melanie, you know, McCullough over there because I can't be every place. And I need to put people in places that has East St. Louis in heart so we can make East St. Louis better. And that's what this is all about. I need to be the conduit, the voices for our citizens going to the next place. So that's what we're trying to do and that's what we're doing here in this strategic plan. So I got off on a little tangent, but I just, you know, had to get that out a little bit, so let me get back on script, Mr. Ellis. So with that, inside the strategic plan, we have five groups, right? Five subcommittees, there's tourism, there's community development, there's public safety, and job creation, and I'm missing one, which, Mr. Shanil, which one I'm missing?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure. And education and infrastructure. So we have these groups and it's broken down and there's subcommittees and people are going and we have strategic meetings, we meet, and each group was tasked to come back to three to five projects, right? So three to five projects. So now we're at that phase. Hence, it's why it's time now to start having citizens' comments and we need to realize. Now today, we want to make sure that we give you the information, right? We want to make sure that you get the survey sheets and this, that, and the other, and we want you to educate yourself on the things that we can and cannot do. And then when we have the next town hall meeting here in the next couple of weeks, then we're going to have those citizen comments so we can start, as you do it online and you give us the paper surveys, we can engage that into the 2030 Plan and inside the comprehensive plan. Because we want to make sure that we're hearing your voices. We want to be transparent. We understand that there's a lot of different nuances that people want to do, you know, and we want to make sure we hear their voices. If nothing else that you get from this tonight, we want to make sure that we hear the citizens of East St. Louis voices. This is your city, right? This is your city. It's not, this is not city by itself, this is your city, and we want to make sure we hear your voices. It's very important to me, you know, and each and every one of these individuals sitting up here, they work hard and I got to give them a round of applause. Applause, wait a minute before you get them, I want you to know why. So we got all this money, correct? And we got all this blessings, right? But it was only because when we first took office, the audit group, the last audit, I think we had was 2015. Today, we're caught up, 2019. Today, we're off the, got to stop paying this. So I need to publicly apologize to the people that was working out of the corporate heads because I haven't always been as nice behind closed doors trying to get that task done. So I want to say thank you for everything that you've done for the citizens of East St. Louis and all that you will do because we got a lot more work to do. So get them a round of applause. We had a few transitions and administrations and other, but we still have the task. And so now, because we're good stewards and we have everything getting buttoned up administratively and we have a good team, now we being recipients of money and this and the other grants and all this other stuff. So now we need to be good stewards of the money that we get, correct? Y'all don't see it. We need to be good stewards, right? That's all we here, right? You know, so we want to make sure that we doing everything above board, which we will do. We want to make sure we put all the money in the right places, which we will do. And we want to make sure that we get all of your input, it's very important. Now, so many things, we cannot, we can't go for our spaceships and rocket ships and all this other stuff, you know, but we have to be very strategic in where we put this money. We have to be very strategic in how we spend this money. You know, we have to because this is the beginning of the new Black Renaissance of the city of East St. Louis. We want to make sure that, you know, and I keep saying, and I mean this with every fiber of my being, we want to make sure we hear your voices and we do the best that we can. Thank you. We want to make sure that we do the best that we can with the money we have to leverage to be able to do more things. People are watching. They're watching. Just like the city manager just stated, that if we blip, block, or blue with this federal money, we in trouble. And we won't blip, we won't block, and we definitely won't blue. I can guarantee you that. Because we have, I'm confident in the team that we have, I'm confident in the citizens and the watchdog community that we have that won't let us blip, block, or blue. You know, this is your money, this is your city. We need to make sure that everything we do is strategic. With economic development, obviously, you know, the public safety is a big thing and infrastructure, these are key components, and also our school district. As we sit here and talk about what we have, the school district is sitting on 78 million dollars. That's a lot of money. When you add, when you add what we have and the school district, that's over 100 million dollars in the city of East St. Louis. That's a lot of money. I'm going to go on, some of my counterparts, I like when I say it, I'm going to say it because they're my heart, and obedience is better than sacrifice. So I'm going to say this, I'm going to say this. If we can't change East St. Louis with over 100 million dollars, everybody from me down need to quit. Government officials, everybody's working, schools need to quit. There's no way that we can't come together with a collective plan and work together as a city for, that we say that we love, right? We say we love East St. Louis. We should put it down, put our egos aside, check them at the door, there's no big I's, no big U's. Nobody has all the answers but him. And as I check, ain't none of us him. So he's the only one that has all the answers. So we can get ourselves in a room and work together to have all that because everybody has something to bring. We just got to compartmentalize and use that and put it in the right space and make sure it makes sense for our city. And when we do that, we're going to win. We're going to win. We're going to win. We're going to win, East St. Louis. We got 100 billion dollars, y'all see? I bet if I was Patty LaBelle, y'all be up and clapping. I bet if I was the St. Louis Quarters and we won the championship, we doing all kinds of stuff, flipping and all this. We got 100 billion dollars for your city. We got a hundred billion dollars for your city. It's our time. So I want to belabor, I want to bring Ms. Chanel up here just to talk about it because she's my counterpart and she's, you know, over the Economic Development Department. So just bring her up a little bit and talk about a few topics that I may have got off topic, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys hear my heart and you hear what we're trying to do. And I'll come back up and close it out and then we're going to the next thing.
Good evening. I know I've been introduced, but I am Chanel Clay Warren, the Director of that, and I'm the Community Development for the city. I do want to touch on a few things. Firstly, I do want to circle back to that survey and make sure that you guys understand the importance that you guys completed that. It will go live on the city's website on Monday morning. However, today there are hard copies. Today there are hard copies on the table here for you to take with you. Like I said, it will be on the website Monday morning as well as the link is listed on the handout that you guys have. There will be a 30-day comment period for you guys to kind of look at it and think about what you want to do, ask any questions you may have, and then get those back to us. The mayor's office will also have copies of that for you guys should you need it. But it really is important, like they say, we do want to hear from you. We want to know what you guys think is important, what you value, what you want to see, or what you deem to be priorities for the city with these funds. I was the co-chair on, so there were six subcommittees. Of course, you know, I am biased to the one that I was co-chair on, but I will just give them all to you briefly. There was education and workforce development, infrastructure, affordable housing, public safety, job creation, industry, and economic development and tourism. And these committees, although that as department heads, we sat on those committees, community members were also a part of those committees. So there were, we call them stakeholders. So I know from my committee for economic development and tourism, I had, you know, House of Mounds, it was Catherine Dunham, it was SIU Lead, there were various pastors in the community that sat on my committee. People over tourism for Southern Illinois were on my committee. And I do, we've only not met for one Tuesday, but I do miss seeing them every Tuesday faithfully at 10:00 a.m. for two hours. We would sit in council chambers and we would have these meetings and we would brainstorm, we would go over things. We would, you know, peruse the Facebook pages and see people were talking about what they were wanting to know that was happening in the city. And we'd go over those things and bring them back to the table. We took homework away and we came back with those with information. So I am excited for what the city is doing. I'm excited for what the subcommittees were able to come up with. I just wanted to point out that this was not, not something that was done unilaterally with just the city employees, but the community was, were involved. And then the survey is a way to kind of tie that all in for you all to also have your input and come back with what you all would want to see. And as the mayor said, we will then, you know, reconvene again for another town hall meeting to tie it all together. A few things that might, and you will see them all, basically when you see the survey, you'll be able to see clearly what these subcommittees deemed to be some of their priorities that they wanted to focus on. By no means is this all-inclusive, by no means is this pretty much such as fun, the priorities are not just in order, but these are the things that we are working on and that we want your feedback on. A few of mine, of course, were enhancing the appearance of the city. Being in economic development, of course, your city needs to look nice in order for you to attract new business. So that includes that all the interests that we have for the city. When you're coming off of the highway, you should be able to see, "Welcome to East St. Louis." You should be able to see landscaping, things of the sort. And I think there are five interests or so that we focus on that we will be working on to kind of just beautify the city and make it more inviting for those that would bring, and even just for, not for them, but for us. It feels good to come into your city and see these things that kind of give you a sense of pride. Along with that will be a few small things that we'll do as far as a banner competition for different, the city has a flag, but we'll work with the high schools to kind of do different flags and do competitions for them that we will have, of course, with the main thoroughfares, which is a part of that State Street. That you'll be able to see those kind of changed throughout the seasons and highlight those and get the school district involved in them. We're gonna create, so one of the big things, people think that we kind of just demolish properties kind of on a whim and don't really consider the beauty of the city. So one thing that we want to make sure that you guys understand with demolition is that we do our best to preserve pieces of the city that we can. One of those things that we're focused on is the majestic theater and the beauty that is present there. So one of our projects is going to be to create a cultural center and performance venue there. And that is so that we can drive, you know, committee members here, people can come in from outside and just kind of save that building because there's so much history there. As far as other things, we work with the tourism department and we work with, you know, House of Mounds and Catherine Dunham, and they will touch at some point, I believe in the future, on that tourism plan when they're ready to unveil that. And there's some beautiful things that are happening with that as far as Catherine Dunham and of course, House of Mounds and preserving her home and they have a beautiful walk that they're gonna do that I'm just kind of excited about, that that was kind of brought up as far as my, in my economic development tourism plan, we are going to revive the East St. Louis Chamber of Commerce. With that, it will be something that is kept in house at the city, at City Hall. That way that as people come and go, it will still be a staple. And that is to help current businesses, future businesses. If you're looking at bringing the business to the city, you will have a place to go and ask questions and feel welcome and get information. Another thing that we're going to do is we're working on developing business incentives packages to attract new business. And just making sure that there's a comprehensive, complete package that we're offering, that's what we're offering you to come and do business here as they reciprocate and tell us what they can do to offer, that they can offer our city as they come into our community to not just take, but to also give back. And then we are going to develop a plan to assist our current business owners. And that is outside of the tip dollars that we have, but as a comprehensive plan for the city as a whole to just offer more meat, I guess is the best way to say that, for what we can do to kind of help enhance current businesses, give them what they need as far as website development or marketing and finance and these sorts to kind of get them to the next level. And if you look when you get the survey, you'll see there's an other line for each one of these. And that is for, if you don't see what you deem to be a priority for the city, we welcome you to write that in on that other line. And then we will, of course, like I said, when we come back together, we will have reviewed everything and then have a more concrete plan. And that is all from me. I am actually, I know the mayor said he was gonna come back up, but we're going to divert quickly and the city manager's coming back regularly. We skipped one little part that we wanted to make sure that you guys have information on. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Chanel. Just to clear the fog and the pews, if you would, before I get there, I want to acknowledge our councilwoman Parks is in the house. She walked in. Would you acknowledge and wave when she walks in? So we've captured these funds and we've got this approach that we're taking. And the question is then, how can we use the funds and what the allocations could look like? I think it's important that we understand what the whole CARES Act program is about and what we can and we cannot do. If you could move to that slide for us, please, because I think that's important, that we understand because as we want your input, we want your suggestions, we want your feedback, it's also important that you have to realize that we have boundaries and we have to operate and work within those boundaries. If you could go to the slide, if you would, please, for the sake of our time, right there. Yes, thank you. So the ARPA is the American Rescue Plan Act that was done under Joe Biden's administration. Let's give a big hand praise for our President Joe Biden. And on March 11th, 2021, President Joe Biden signed into law a 1.9 trillion, 1.9 trillion dollar American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA, that's what we'll continue to call it as. And the ARPA package includes $362 billion in direct federal fiscal recovery act for the state and local governments through the state and the local fiscal recovery fund, the SLFRF. Outside of the SLFRF, the ARPA also provides billions to education, public health, housing, small business, infrastructure, and food assistance. Local governments, just like ours, may be able to apply for grants to access other ARPA funding and programs. So how can municipalities spend ARPA funds? I want you to take a look at this and it's important that you hear this because there are some do's and there's some don'ts. I want to go over what we can spend the money on and then I'll reflect on what we cannot spend the money on. We can spend the funds on providing services and programs to contain and mitigate the spread of COVID-19. That means testing, masks, health services, and so forth. Then we can also provide services to address behavioral healthcare needs that were exacerbated by the pandemic. Many of our communities were really devastated with mental health issues. Staying in homes, being locked down for months has had an effect on many of us emotionally, mentally, and psychologically. Also, we could provide assistance by covering payroll and benefit for employees to the extent they can work on COVID-19 responses. That would be our public safety, our fire chief, our fire police chief, and those staff members that work under them. And then providing economic aid. That can be individually as well as for our businesses. Also replacing lost revenue. Our largest provider of revenue in our general fund in the city of East St. Louis comes from the Casino Queen. And I emphatically talk about that. That's not a good position to be in. When 65% of your revenue comes from one place, that's not good. But in saying that, we can provide losses because the Casino Queen, obviously their revenue was totally down. They did not have people coming out because of the pandemic, being shut in, and so on and so forth. They didn't generate the revenue. And if you go by there, you see the people are not coming back and responding the way that they used to. So we can use funds to reallocate to our general fund for those losses of revenue. And then serving the hardest-hit communities and families, which would be the metro area of East St. Louis proper. I want to talk about what cannot be spent on because there've been a lot of questions, a lot of phone calls, people asking, "What you gonna do with the money?" Or you see what we can do with the money, but I want to make sure we walk out of here understanding what we cannot do with the money. That's replacing revenues due to a local tax cut, a local tax refund enacted after March 3rd, 2021. Making pension payments. Funding debt service. Paying for legal settlements or judgments. Isn't that right, Mr. Bearcette?
Pardon?
Depositing into any rainy day fund or creating financial reserves. Now, that's unique because what they're literally saying is that we can't take the money and put it in an account that makes money, if you will, and then it's parlayed into another account that continues to make money. They want us to spend the money, to use the money, to be working capital, to improve our community, improve our cities, and so forth. And then lastly, spending on general infrastructure projects such as park improvements, playground equipment, or road and bridges, bridges of maintenance. I do want to go back to what we can spend the money on because we can use it for infrastructure and sewers, infrastructures and sewers. And our mayor has been talking about creating a new infrastructure and making sure that our sewers are properly functioning. But we realize you can't fix the sewers without fixing what? Say it one more time. You can't fix the sewers without fixing what?
Streets.
So we will benefit our streets and roads by fixing our what?
Sewers.
Very good. So we want to make sure tonight that each and every one of you all fill out the questionnaire that Chanel talked about. Take a look at it, read it, digest it. Go online Monday, as she mentioned. It will be available for you to give your comments, your feedback on what you think we can do based on the guidelines that you shared with you. We don't want to misuse the money or misappropriate the money because there'll be great penalties for that. So we want to make sure that we're good stewards and we're able to use this in a way that will move this city forward. Thank you very much.
A few other things I want to talk about and as I go, before I go into the other initiatives that we're doing. City manager, he has illustrated that we can, as COVID debt, you know, we can't, we experienced a higher deficit as related to COVID. So the city of East St. Louis, we already had a five, I think it was a what, 4.5 or $5 million deficit, Trezor, everybody was? Okay. Before COVID, $5 million deficit. Before COVID, $5 million deficit. I'm gonna say it one more time. Before COVID, $5 million deficit. Currently, we have a $9 million deficit. $9 million deficit. So because as he illustrated directly related to the Casino Queen not being operable and would not be able to put money into our general funds. So what does that mean in layman's terms? There's a formula that's inside, correct, attorney, there's a formula inside the Recovery Act Plan that we can utilize to mitigate some of that deficit from the Casino Queen. We have to do that first. Why do we have to do that first? Because we still have to pay the police, the fire, the public works, the code enforcers, street department, and everybody else. So we have to try to figure out what that formula, but we know the formula, but we just gotta get the dollar amount, and we will illustrate that. There's no fault of our own, we didn't plan for COVID, you know? But we gotta get out of this situation that we're in. And we want to be transparent. That's a $9 million deficit that we have. You know, the fault of the city of East St. Louis, I can go back further, before, when we first took office, we had the current deficit and we got immediately hit with an intercept, correct? Intercept. We had the pensions intercepted, 100% of our revenue. For how long, Trezor?
Forty-six months.
Forty-six months, 100% of our revenue. And you know what happened when we made the last payment? We got shut down for COVID. I'm illustrating. First got in office and I think they took our money when, so in August, it was August. August and August and then the following March. And when we got done making our last payment to the pension, we got hit with COVID. But we still standing. We still standing. We didn't miss a payment. Nobody missed a paycheck. We had to do some things. That's why when we got the CARES money from the state and the policemen and firemen were working overtime, we had to make sure we paid them. So that's why that went to the police and fire and all people that work in City Hall. We wanted to make sure we took care of that because they were working during overtime, overtime, you know, when people went out for COVID, you know, as you know, I caught COVID myself and other people caught COVID. So we wanted to square that away, so that's squared away. So now we're looking at the trajectory is going up, right? But we wanted to make sure we were transparent when we started. So out of this first $18 million, we have to figure out what percentage of that is going towards that deficit that was created by COVID. Correct, attorney? So we just want to make sure that we're doing everything because we gotta stand between two pillars and I'm still the city manager's terminology, between the policies and the procedures. We're gonna stand between that, we're not gonna get outside, we're not gonna get out this side. We're gonna stand between the policies and the procedures. So that's the first thing we got to do as we start going with this $18 million and such. And we're gonna be continually working through this plan. That's why we again want to be transparent with the citizens so they can hear, they can engage, they can understand. Why are y'all moving so slow? Because we gotta make sure we doing everything correctly. And with that, doing everything correct, I am trying and Councilwoman Parks, she can, I think she agrees with me, we want to try to make sure we have a third-party person to come outside the City Hall and make sure that we spending this money correctly and, you know, doing, helping us with our audits because we want to make sure every penny is accounted for, you know, because we do not want to get dinged. We don't want to blip, block, or blue. We stated that, correct? I can't hear you. We need feedback. This is, you know, the town hall, you know, we just, we need feedback. I want you to understand what we're doing. So, you know, you can hear that, you know, it's just that we, we don't have a blank check. We just don't have free spending. What we can do is we have to be strategic and very calculated how we spend this money. So I just want to make sure we reiterate that. There's a few initiatives that we're working out of, we got the Adopt the Street Program, you know, Lincoln Class of 1984. They adopted that. And a few other people, Voluntary Code Enforcement, very excited about that. You know, we have citizens coming down to help out code enforcement. I know. You know, we have citizens coming down to help our code enforcement, I know Director Howard, he can, uh, he's happy about that, because, you know, we've been out, uh, the code enforcement department's been the funk for about four years, so it's, it's taken some time to get back in the rhythm, but we're slowly getting back into the rhythm, you know? And, you know, he's me, he has his challenges. You know, when people been not doing things as they should for four years, it's kind of hard, right? Getting them back in line. But we all say that we want a better-looking city here, correct? We all say we want to look like the Bellville and the shallows of the world and the Chesterfields. But with that being said, you can't have it both ways, right? So we got to make sure we do that code enforcement thing, you know? And, um, everybody needs to be held accountable, and everybody will. Uh, we got another cleanup effort, you know, uh, with those great group of young people in the back, give them a hand of applause, a raise. That's July the thirty-first, um, and, um, they will have all the information in the back, um, for, as for us to clean up, and again, you know, we're just very excited about having this time. I'm so excited about everybody being here. I guess we said the right thing, money. Show me the money, right? Everybody want to know it, and I'm so excited, that's what it takes to get you guys here, I'm, I'm glad you're here. You know, I'm glad, I'm glad that people are here and my phone is getting texts. I get your questions then, because we're not, we're not, I just want to be clear, that this, this town hall meeting today is not for the questions back and forth today, but I will talk to you individually after the town hall meeting. The purpose is, we want to make sure we get the information to you, and we want to be organized in a way we, how we filter the information and organize and how we get the information back. So the next town hall meeting, we have a question and answer period. If you have any questions for any of our directors pertaining to their professions, they're sitting right up here, you may, you feel free to engage with them here in the next four or five minutes after I get them talking, and they're gonna be standing by to answer all your questions from public works, I know Mr. Lockett is, he's, he's, uh, you know, he probably, him and the chief period probably just need to sit over there, because I know that's probably where all the questions is going. But, you know, we, you know, so, but it's okay. East St. Louis didn't get like this overnight. Didn't get like this overnight, gang, and it's not gonna be fixed overnight. You know, so we got to be strategic and, you know, write a vision and make it plain. That's simple. We're gonna write a vision, we're gonna make it plain, and we're gonna execute with your help. Thank you, God bless, and see you in how many weeks, Mrs. Josswood? Four weeks at City Hall, seven o'clock. Okay, thank you.